A roll call.
John Kramer, Susan Hammond, DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Gary Howke, Chris Anson.
Here.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration, action, or consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
John, uh, DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Gas Authority? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so ordered. That brings us then to the Seminole Utilities Authority. A roll call, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Howke, John Kramer, Terry Thomason.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Susan Hammond, Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Uh, consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move your first. Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Utilities Authority? Being none, we then go to current business, the addition to the agenda. Number one, consideration and possible action to approve emergency repairs to a collapsed sewer line under Broadway Street near the State Farm Insurance Office through the use of a quote "pipe bursting" unquote technique at a cost not to exceed $32,000 foregoing formal bids and declaring an emergency. This is a non-budgeted, non-budgeted item to be funded from the Water and Sewer CIP fund.
I think we're set up to start that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. They're already down there, uh, looking at the, the supply lines. It's, it's in bad shape. We had it TV'd, uh, meaning that we ran a cable down with a television attached to it, and, uh, at least part of the line has collapsed, and, uh, there are other holes in the line, so the pipe bursting is by far the best and safest technique that we could use down there, so, we're, we're in dire straits, so we would highly recommend that you guys approve of this.
Move your first.
Steve, with, with this technique, will they be able to keep the road open?
Yes.
While we're doing this work?
Yes.
Second.
I, I need two votes on this. The first one I need is declaring it an emergency, then your appropriation, if you could, if you would do that, please. We need to, we need to...
You want the emergency first?
We need to declare it as an emergency before you take action.
We need to declare emergency. Our second.
Roll call.
Uh, DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion to declare an emergency passes.
Emergency having been declared, now move that we do it.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
No further business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All favor? Oh, so ordered. Now, brings us then to the, uh, City Council. We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Susan Hammond, John Kramer, Bill Watland, Gary, Gary Howke, DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is aga de misi in misca hanka gigo dai, pe'ukasapka ne kui chitim edo moment portolofa seminoli, moment po'istiam ogen. Itinoki chakitis, moment chimis aga de misi ano getzkas. O God, whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and all our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
We take one matter, uh, out of order today, uh, that we may take this up because we've got all this is, um, has to do with, uh, um, OG&E update on the recent power outages under appearance or petition from the audience.
If you would, anybody that speaks on this subject, if you don't mind stepping forward to the microphone, that would be a big help to us.
Right to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
I'm Brad Coaten with OG&E. I'm the substation supervisor for this whole entire area. So I'm not exactly sure how in depth everybody wants me to go. I can be real technical or deep example. Or I just take questions?
Understandable.
Are there any specific questions from the audience in this regard?
Why does this electricity keep flickering on and off?
Well, I know of two outages, big outages. I can tell you right now, we're, we got about a $300,000 project going up here to increase your liability. Without going into all kinds of NERC federal laws that have changed, there's some things we're doing up there that we have to do. Now to explain the outages, we had a line fall on coal. We've got all the 12.5 load that feeds this town on mobile sub, except for one circuit feeding out of Letha's sub. So normally, when we have a line fault, we lose one circuit instead of all four. And until the 25th, that's how we'll have the town fed on the 12.5. And the 29 circuit feeds towards the hospital, the 24 feeds downtown. They're tied together. The 31 feeds north to the industrial part and out towards Walmart. The 22 feeds the southeast part of town, which is picked up out of another sub, so it didn't go out on any of these outages. And the first problem was a relay setting, which took out everything on the 12.5. The second outage, we took out the 24 and the 29 because the line fell during some windstorm. Like I said, more detailed, but that's the only two I know about during this project.
So... Excuse me, the changes you're making, is it going to improve something for us, or?
I don't know if y'all remember last year, when, uh, we had a lightning storm come, about the time the tornadoes hit Moore. We lost the entire sub for a period. What we're doing is we're putting a sexualizing scheme in there. Right now, there's two breakers on that main 138,000 bus going through there. We're adding a third one and a motor operated switch. So what'll happen, if you lose that whole bus on a transformer differential or bus differential, it'll all trip out, a motor will open up, and both sides will try back. Whichever side doesn't have the fault will stay hot, so half the town will come back on automatically, depending on which side has the fault, and it helps us identify quicker. So it will make service restoration quicker. And that's some of the changes. Some of the changes were made in our, uh, federal government regulations. American federal government's got into a lot of stuff, I'm sure you're all well aware of that.
We won't comment on that.
Okay. I prefer not to myself. I don't know what we call a power surge. If something gets in the line, it pulls the voltage down.
So it doesn't go up?
When it comes back on, it can go above that voltage, but as far as what some people call a surge, we have nothing out there to just squirt a bunch of power. Now, we do have it where it will pull voltage down if you got something laying on the line. A lot of people will call it a surge. It's really a pull down. We're, we're pulling the voltage down for someone. Very seldom is there any kind of surge. I can't think of what we call a surge.
So... We had the, we had the outages on Wednesday, and on Saturday, and then there was a power bump or something on Sunday that knocked everything out. And then it came back on within seconds, but, you know, it's too late for some of us. What's causing that?
That part I can answer to the line. If it tripped and came back on within seconds, that's how our system's designed. The breaker's designed to clear when it faults, and it recloses three times. So it will trip, and then it will reclose automatically real quick, then the second one's 15 seconds, and then the third one's 45, and then it locks out, stays out. And that's designed, if you get a bird, or any kind of critter, it will trip and reclose. So those, those right there, will come back by, or our SCADA people, and the city will know it. It'll be, our operators will see it. We don't, unless we're getting a bunch of them, we don't go drive all those lines out. We get excessive operations, then we do patrol it out and find the problem. Like I said, as far as I know, I know of two, so if you had a third one, I wouldn't worry about it. We had two complete outages on a large section of town.
When it tries to reset itself, does, is that automatic, or is that manual?
Automatic. Those first three recloses is automatic, for premature time. And most everybody's systems have one.
Yeah, last summer, you guys were doing some, some change, I think, to the system, and I know out north, we had some problems with this, with, uh, losing a one line, one leg. And, uh, so this is really different than what was happening at that point, is that?
That was lime work.
Okay.
And I'm 30 years in substation. I'm in the rock inside the fence. It's a great place to be.
Until now, you're right.
Until now. Normally Kenny Bob's here doing the talking, and I just answer technical, technical questions.
It seems like though around my house, every time the wind blows, power will go out for just a second, long enough to shut everything down, and then it'll come back on. Why would that happen?
Could be a tree. If it's coming back on, it's not a solid fault. It's something bumping it. I don't... If you see any trees in the line, we have a three-year maintenance cycle on our lines. Like I say, I'm not involved in the line part much at all.
Yeah, from where my line comes in, there's no trees. We cut them all down.
Well, you're tied to the whole system.
But all up and down that alley, where the alley should've been, there's trees growing up into the power lines.
I can, I, I don't know where you live, or, you know, what circuit you're on, but if you can call in the 800 number and tell them where the trees are, we can get somebody out there. That's about the best I can do. I mean, I, if I call in, since I don't know any addresses or anything, I wouldn't be able to get a rotation for the trees.
Well, I was, I called in once, and I was told that because the trees are on private property, even though there is a right of way through OG&E, they can't go in there and trim the trees away from the lines.
Secondary, if you're talking about secondaries, we don't trim secondary over your house. Those belong to the homeowner. The primary lines, if it's on, the three-phase line on the pole, we, that's our, we'll trim them. So if you're talking about secondaries with them, that, that's what they're talking about. But if it's primary line, we, we trim it.
I've got a question here, just to, for us dummies that know anything about electricity. You said that the majority of the town is on this one substation, I think that's located right here on 9 and 99, kinda right there, and then there's one out south, like you said, by Letha?
Letha.
That runs the southeast portion of the town?
Not normally. Normally, we have four 12.5 circuits and two 24-kV circuits.
Okay. I don't know what you just said, and that's what I'm, that's why I'm asking this.
24,000 volt circuits. We have two of them, and we have four 12,000 volt circuits.
Okay.
The 12,000 volt circuits, those four feed the heart of Seminole. Letha feeds a little bit in the south normally, but we, too. The 631 circuit that feeds north, the industrial part, is pretty loaded. We can't put anything together with it. It has to stay on its own circuit just because of the load that way.
I see.
So we've got the 29, which feeds towards the hospital and the college, and the 24, which feeds this section of town. They're tied together right now. So anytime there's a fault way out by the college, they're gonna see the blink down here.
That, okay.
That will happen to this project.
So, and that's all fed out of this substation right over here? So if there's a, depending on what line it is, what you're talking about, that's, from what I understand, any, any problems that occur out here, if there's a relay, or she said there was a relay problem?
Yes.
Or something? It, is, is a relay on one line, or four, each line has one?
Every line terminal has a set of relays. It's not just one relay. That's why I didn't want to go in like great detail. There's time over current relays, and then there's instantaneous relays. That's, answers his question. They're designed to clear real quick, 'til the squirrel falls off and it comes back on.
I see.
The time over current, if it's just load, say we got a lot of people kicking a bunch of stuff on, and it hits that 640 amp trip, it doesn't trip automatically. It's gotta be at that for a certain amount of time before that spins around and actually trips, right?
So the project that you're doing is in this substation right over here?
And then to, to go further, our project involves the transmission part of that sub. That's where the federal government gets involved. Every substation has a transmission piece where we have 138,000 volt lines. They're tied with PSO, and I don't know if you know about their new Earl's Borough sub?
No.
Uh, there's a pipeline that comes through here, and they put a AEP or PSO, put a big sub to run that pipeline out there. We're tying into it from this sub, too. So there's new relay terminals on the transmission piece. So if we lose a big chunk of transmission, like we did during the tornadoes when they were north of town, our biggest problem that time wasn't with the distribution lines here in town. If we don't have the high voltage lines feeding the sub, everything's dead.
I see. So is this substation enough to run the entire town?
It is.
I mean, without any stress?
It is. The main reason we do our maintenance in the spring and fall when load's down, we can move it around. To do this job, we have OG&E's biggest mobile sub that we have in there. It's probably one of the biggest ones in the country. And the reason we had a relay problem, it's the first time it's been out of the shop since we drug it in from Canada. It was built in Canada. So there's always a few bugs to work through that. So even in the heart of the summer, if we have an outage, we lose a transmission. What we have in the past, like if y'all been here long enough, we've actually had transformers fail. We have a mobile sub big enough to carry even summer load for one of them 20 MVA transformers now. We didn't until about three years ago, but we do now. And part of our policy is, is with the Corporation Commission, within eight hours, I think it is, there, that's how we call our sub firm. Even if it's fully loaded in the summer, as long as we can have a mobile sub in and installed to pick the load up within eight hours, it's firm.
Your turn. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That was...
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna even boil it down to a little more of a layperson answer. How, it, it sounds like you're making improvements, and you're advancing. How soon could a, the normal citizen expect to see more reliable service? What, do you think that'll happen soon, or midsummer?
Are you a lawyer?
No, no, no.
Um, it's relative. That's why I have to answer that, that way. As far as transmission goes, and like I said, that big bus type transformer on the north end of that sub, if we have any problems with it, and it's common that we will, the last year deal was a lightning strike. We cleared the whole sub every time. So we will no longer clear that sub. Nobody will even know that we've lost that transformer in the future. Now, we will stress our transmission system with that out of service, but everybody's lights will stay on. But when you ask how can they see something more reliable, to this gentleman's point about trees and his point, that piece, I can't stand here and answer. Because if we have a rash of squirrels, or, I just, I just really can't answer that piece.
Yeah.
As far as the transmission piece, they should see more reliable transmission situation, 25th, when we move out of there.
25th, okay.
But what is your timeframe to finish what you're down doing?
April 25th.
April, okay.
This sub is, is loaded enough that this is one that winter or fall, or winter or summer, we can't be in there working. We could, but it just, things are really loaded now. What kills our system is heat, and the summertime, we just really try to stay away from it. We just let things rock along and run like they should. So April 25th, we'll be out of there.
Other questions?
Do you have Kenny Bob from that seven-four wake-up sign down?
You couldn't even get Kenny Bob to come here tonight, could you?
He puts you on the hard seat, so why?
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you gotta state your name for the record.
I will. Steve Schoeps from Strather Cinema here in Seminole. I just want to give you a business person's perspective on what this has, how this has affected us. Uh, I understand, I don't know any of the electricity stuff, but I can tell you from a business person's point of view, I had to refund two shows at the Strather Cinema because of this, and it cost me money, and it cost the city money, because I also had to refund sales tax. Now, this, this is not, for a modern day business, you have to understand that these little power bumps and these outages aren't just blinks. They knocked down every computer we have. All our, all our movies are done over computer now. So when they go down, I'm out of business. When they go down, and then they, even if they go down for a second and come back up, I have to stop and reboot every computer, which means 20 minutes. That reflects on me, that reflects on our city, because people think we have poor businesses, we have old-fashioned businesses. I don't know what the answer is. Uh, I think one of the answers we have to look at is underground electric. Every other city in the United States is putting in underground electric. We need to be looking at that. And we need to be kind of demanding from OG&E that some answers come from this. I'm not saying that what could've been, that this could've been prevented, but I want you to know the impact on not just me, but also on the city of Seminole and on our reputation. Because if we're gonna recruit modern businesses, modern industries into this town, the number one thing behind education and healthcare is reliable electricity. If we can't provide that, we're not gonna get anything that has to do with computers. Because if that goes out just for a second, you know, my, I have battery backups, yes, but you can't run a 2,000 watt, two 2,000 watt bulbs on battery backup, unless you're gonna spend a fortune on these huge systems. So my, my system kept the computers running for about 15 minutes, but, you know, that didn't help. Not when it, when it bumps, it still knocks it, turns it off and turns it back on. But the, the problem is when it goes down a long time. It even killed all my batteries, and I had to start all over. Uh, so I just want, I'm, I'm not, I don't have an answer. But I, I just want you to understand the impact that it has on businesses in Seminole and on the future of getting new businesses in Seminole, because I think it's a, this is a serious issue. If we don't have, if we don't have up-to-date equipment, we need to be demanding that we get up-to-date equipment, not wait until we have something that breaks before it's replaced. But if something is out of date now, it needs to be replaced before it goes down. Because when it goes down, it's too late. And any, that's my opinion.
Has this happened before, Steve, or is this the first time you've had this problem?
This is the first time we've had it three times in a row, and it, and it's the first time that I think that I've ever had it stay out as long as it did. You know, Wednesday nights was out for about an hour, and people aren't gonna wait. Saturday nights was late at night, and it was out for an hour again. Well, I had, the theater was filled. Those people all left. That's money out of my pockets, money out of the city's pocket. Anyway, I just wanted to come down and say that I'm not mad at OG&E. I just, we need to have an answer. We need to have something that is gonna be reliable, because if that, you know, sooner or later, these power bumps do damage to these computers. I've got a heck of a lot of money invested in computers. And if, if those start getting damaged, who do I go to get those replaced? I don't think my insurance is gonna cover it. I don't think OG&E will cover it. So I'm just left. So, anyway. I'm not mad at anybody. I just want everybody to, to understand the impact, so that when you make decisions in the future about these things, that you understand that it does affect everybody, especially the businesses, and especially the future of Seminole. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm not mad at you.
Are there any other appearances or petitions from the audience?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask one more question, just based on what Mr. Schoeps said? What, I guess there's a two-part question. What, um, on the, as far as a, a modern system, or the stage of the system, or what type of system we have here, is it antiquated? Is it, I mean, is it new? Is it what we see in a lot of new, new construction or development with, with electrical systems, or?
Have you looked at that sub?
No, I don't know. I couldn't tell you, other than it's a bunch of antennas and poles.
Well, on the north end of that sub was probably built before my time, so I'm guessing in the 30s. But the equipment, the actual breakers and relays, or Switzer relays, which is digital relays. In the old days, all relays operated with a magnetic field and contact. So the current came up, created a magnetic field, and that took that disc to roll around, hit a contact, for it to work. And then there was a timer, much like your old cooking timer, except it was electric operated. These new digital relays all work off a microprocessor is what it is. It uses logic. If this condition happens, this relay tells it to do that. So it's, the relays themselves are state-of-the-art, and some of them. And some of it, it's a generation behind. It's still electromechanical, is what we call it. It's using coils and contacts. As far as the transmission piece, that's what we're changing out, is all electromechanicals and putting all microprocessor relays. But you'll find in everybody's system, the south end of that sub is all SF6 gas insulated breakers. There's no, uh, dielectric cord. The north end on the 69 section still has two old oil breakers left that were built in the 50s. They taste good, they're reliable, but they are not state-of-the-art on the 69. But the bulk of the system feeds off that 138 section, which is SF6 breakers. On the distribution side, they're vacuum breakers instead of oil breakers. So it's a mix of stuff, and everybody's system's that way. Like I said, just this relay project and some motors is $300,000. You guys work with budgets? OG&E works with a budget, too.
Let me, I need to simplify a little bit for my, my mind. Do you mind?
Go right ahead, please.
Uh, let's, let's, I, I think I saw a big construction project going on in Norman at their substation. If you compared what Norman got in this new upgrade, and you compared it to what we've got at our substation, what differences would you see?
Anytime you're talking about Shawnee or Norman, based on their load, they normally have more than one sub. I'll be frank about that. You'll have, or you can pick some of this up from another direction. Here we have Letha, which just has one little 7500 kVA, and I know that doesn't mean squat to you, but it's a smaller transformer. We can pick up pieces of Seminole from Letha.
Okay.
But we cannot pick all of it up. So that's where we differ.
Well, I'm talking more in terms of the switchgear and the reliability of the structure.
We use the same stuff company-wide. We have Siemens breakers down there, we have S&amp;C breakers down there. That is our standard. Switzer relays going forward, microprocessor is our standard. We have all that here. Same thing we use in Norman. That's our standard. If, if you're looking for a weak point in Seminole, and I'll probably explain from OG&E by saying this, is that the bigger the town gets, we don't rely on one transmission system and feeding it from one direction.
Okay.
That's, that is the weak point.
Gotcha. All right.
What would a construction, what would, what would a, a substation like that cost new? If you, have any idea about that?
Part of the problem is getting 138 in here. The 138 lines that come over here belong to PSO, so we'd have to pay for that. I think what I was told, and don't hold me to this, somebody might tell you something different. It's about a million dollars a mile to build transmission line. So getting the line, it could cost over a million dollars. The substation itself, to have two 20 MVAs and four circuits, would be around five million dollars. So, you know, it could be in excess of 10 million dollars to, by the time you got the high line. And then you gotta tie your distribution back to it. And if I could answer on the underground part, we, a lot of your newer communities have underground service, but that all hits an overhead line. The same way with every substation, an overhead line has to feed it. We have no underground transmission except for a tinker. And that stuff is outrageously high to put underground, so... While I will agree underground's great, but when we have an underground outage, we can send linemen here on overhead and they can find it. If it's underground, we gotta thump it, hope we find it, dig it up, fix it, so the outage times really increase. They're not exposed to the elements, but it will increase.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any, any other questions from anyone?
If not, we thank you very much.
And I'll say sorry for the outages. I don't know about the third one.
Thank you very much for coming.
Are there any other appearances or petitions from the audience on any other matter? If not, then we'll, uh, go back to... Yes, yes, yes.
I don't, I don't wanna talk about electric either, sorry.
Oh, come on, Amy. Tell us who you are.
Amy Britt with the Seminole Chamber of Commerce. Uh, mine is really simple. It doesn't have anything to do with electric. I just wanna thank, um, one, the city employees for so much help, uh, this weekend. Was made in Oklahoma. It was a huge success. Thank God for the perfect weather, and so, uh, it was a great event. 115-plus vendors, uh, thousands of people came out. It was just amazing. So thanks to the city for bringing out bleachers and helping us close the road, and the permit board for letting us do that, and for approving our permit for being down there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, aren't we glad that we didn't have Sunday's weather or today's wind? Okay, any other appearances? Any other appearances? All right, then that brings us then back up to the regular agenda, elections and appointments, consideration and possible action to approve the mayor-oral appointment of Ernie Willis to the Seminole Tourism Council for a term of three years.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think we're going to table that, or request a tabling. The mayor wanted to visit with him and had not a chance, so.
Is there a motion to table? Second. Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Consent agenda, consideration and action consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to approvals and acceptances, bids. Number one, consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from Boss Lighting for the replacement of the remaining ninety light fixtures at the fire department to be funded from the Series two thousand and four revenue
Yes, sir. The, this will, this will be taken from the money that we had for several years to help with ambulance operations. It's the two thousand and four series bond. And because we're now housing the ambulances out at the, the fire department, this will be what it's used for, to light the bays.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, it brings us to ordinances. Item number two, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one-one-six-three, an ordinance amending title four, animals. Chapter one, animals and foul, general regulations, section four dash one dash eleven, cruelty prohibited to the city of Seminole Code of Ordinances.
DeeDee, I think you know more about this than I do, but we, we're trying to bring this kind of up into the twenty-first century a little bit.
Well, I know it's just been run through committee and it's also gone through the Humane Society, I believe, and they've looked at it and reviewed it. And this is their recommendations to us. It's doing nothing but cleaning up the fact that you cannot be cruel to an animal. And they have every reason in the world to ask that request, so thereby I move that be approved.
It does beef up our current ordinances, too, in, with regard to animals. So our staff recommendation is that we pass the ordinance.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve, roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one-one-six-six, an ordinance rezoning property at the intersection of Ideal and Killingsworth from R-two, two-family residential, to C-three, commercial.
The property, the subject property, if you know on Boren Boulevard where the lumberyard is, there's a vacant lot directly, it would be northwest of that. So it's going to be right there at Killingsworth and Ideal, or, yeah, it's all Ideal, Killingsworth and Boren intersect right there, so. I assume all the, we didn't get any comments back from the notification.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then on the addendum to the agenda, item three A, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-fourteen dash oh-four, a resolution designating April twenty-fourteen as fair housing month within the city of Seminole. I don't think we do this every year, don't we?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, item number four, consideration and possible action to approve legally conveying four city-owned lots east of the high school to Seminole public schools.
The city was recently approached by the school for acquisition of these four lots that I understand is adjacent to the Jan Kadenhead's Law Office, Department of Law Office, counseling facility or counseling office, is that right? Somewhere right there. And we don't use it, all we're doing is maintaining it and the city's agreed, or excuse me, the school's agreed to maintain it. My understanding is that they want to utilize that to provide a place for the Seminole Alumni Association to probably construct a future facility there. And staff recommendation is that you approve the, approve the conveyance of that property with the understanding that the school will assume maintenance on the, on the properties.
Did we acquire these through urban renewal or is this something private?
Donation. My understanding was they were donated.
Yeah, this was before the Urban Manoa Authority was formed. This was back under Buster's many, many years ago.
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, consideration and possible action to allow public use of the north conference room at City Hall and setting a fifty dollar per day rate for use of the room by the public.
This, for several years, we, we assumed that the jury room, the north conference room was being used as a jury room for various trials. The, as the juries retired, they could go down there and deliberate. That has continued. And we noticed that there's no longer a court being held upstairs. And it, it appears that there are mediation firms and other lawyers who do business in Seminole County who have recognized that they've got free access to a free room. So obviously, it, it's something that we would prefer to have access to full-time since the court's no longer there. If they need the room, I think, I think we can make, make room for them and, at certain times, but they really need to schedule it with us. They, they pick in opportune times to spend all day in our conference room and we didn't even know they were going to be there. So what we're requesting is that we put a fifty dollar fee on it and have them schedule with us.
One thing I would observe, I know that times have changed, but municipal court is still held there. And at least when I was presiding judge in municipal court, we had jury trials twice a year. I assume if jury trials are still requested, that would still be available for jury use.
Absolutely. If it's a municipal function, that's, that's absolutely going to be made available to them. And it's made available, frankly, it's made available to anybody that wants it, but they need to schedule with us and you guys can set the fee, fifty dollars, which is drawn out of the air, frankly. Is that, from a legal, is that something that the legal profession normally sees? If you have a mediation somewhere, are you going to pay a fee to?
I just want to know what you have against lawyers. Trying to help him out. The mediation services that are used there are from East Central Oklahoma, State, ECU. It's free to the public. But I do agree, I mean, when they do set mediations, they do occupy a long, long time. I understood that maybe the rooms were being left unkept and it was causing a lot of problems with having to go in and clean up the messes. But I've never used it and I guess I won't anymore.
You're welcome. It's just we, we're going to pay somebody to come clean it afterward.
Right.
Hope it matters before you.
Well, I think in order for the city to be able to recover some costs of having to clean if people are going to use it, I would move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson. Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six, consideration and possible action to approve amending the fiscal year twenty-thirteen dash fourteen airport match budget from sixteen thousand dollars to eighteen thousand nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents. And to approve transferring the match funds from the Series two thousand and six non-bonded account to the airport authority for completing upgrades to the airport runway. When are these upgrades supposed to start?
Sharon, do you have a, a more recent update than I do, I'm sure?
We just finished with the design. They're supposed to be getting those specs to us. They've gone through FAA, they've also gone through Oklahoma Aeronautics. The next grant on board is going to be the airport runway overlay. And the grant cycle is going to start fairly soon. As soon as we get an agreement with the engineer on track, we will go forward with making application for the funds from Oklahoma Aeronautics and from Federal Aviation Administration to start the construction for the runway overlay.
So that's what this increase is for?
That is actually for the last two grant cycles. One, the, the two thousand and thirteen grant cycle, one payment was missed and didn't take place until the two thousand, fiscal year thirteen fourteen. And that ran us over as far as the amount that we had budgeted for the, for the design grant that we're doing now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us then to reports. City manager?
Yes, I wanted to let the council know that we have turned in an application for a summer youth program. We don't know, we won't know for another couple of weeks whether or not the city of Seminole is going to be host to the summer youth program, but we will bring back to the council for you to accept the grant, should we get it. The, the plan is to hire twelve disadvantaged youth and to hire a, a teacher and also a construction supervisor as well as specialist to teach them how to finish, refinish some of our dilapidated buildings downtown. Classic example would be next to Anna's Restaurant. You can see the, the clay tile is exposed. When these folks are finished, the, the idea in theory is that it will be a smooth plaster-like surface. So we want to do as many of those as we can and, and perhaps work in some of the flower areas and, and upgrade those. And that'll be, that'll be the mission of the summer youth program if we get the grant. I want to, I want to tell you that we, we were very fortunate that we've got such an aggressive, forward-thinking group of emergency management people. We've, we had several of them attend the Jinx Public School training. This training was an active shooter training. So they got to see firsthand how things happen in an active shooter environment within a school setting. I, I think that we learned a lot. Certainly, everything they brought back was, was good. I think we've, we've got a good handle on much of it. Some of it we need a lot of work on. And we're going to do our best to get in position where we know what we're going to do, when it happens, if it happens. There won't be any questions. We'll have training, we'll, we'll know exactly how, or at least we, we'll have good ideas on how to react. I'm just proud of them. I, I think that's a tremendous statement that a community our size. And I think some of the things we took away were extremely positive. I think in terms of police response and, and fire response, ambulance response, we're actually ahead of some of the Tulsa area. So I'm very proud of how quickly they've developed plans and, and been aggressive to get us in a position to respond. We have, on our, changing the subject, we're on our blackboard response, the emergency response that is going to notify the notification system, things are going very well. People probably have been tested once or twice by now and, and seen the tests come to their phones or text messages. Things are very, very positive on that end. We got the first test, I think we had six hundred and ninety-five bad phone numbers and/or text areas. We have that down to twelve on the last test, so that's remarkable. And, and it's a, a big pat on the back to Ed Lemmings and his team. One of the things that we always get this time of year are questions about public storm You know, we've debated that at the council level many times. And this last week, I've asked our department heads to go ahead and develop a plan that might encompass a, a public storm shelter. There are many arguments against public storm shelters. Specifically, I think Midwest City or, or Dell City was one that just shut theirs down because in the event, people, for whatever reason, wait till the very last second and then they hop in their cars, which is the number two thing not to do, is get in a car. And they, they try to make it to the public storm shelter, endangering everybody. So that's one reason not to do it. But I at least wanted some options available to the city council that, you know, we're a fairly small community, perhaps it's something that you all might want to do. There are some locations that I think would be good to have it at, with some available parking. The questions still remain, will people come early enough to take shelter or will there be mass chaos at the very last second if we have an event? So I'd be interested to hear from any of you guys, anytime, if you have input on the subject. That's all I have.
Mr. Attorney, attorney?
Nothing.
Not even one word?
I'm just glad the city manager makes his attorneys feel loved, as Alana was saying.
Remarks and inquiries of council members, Ward one, Susan's not here, I have nothing to say at this point. Ward two, no one's here from Ward two. Ward three, Jeff Griffin?
Well, Steve, I had written down blackboard here on my notes to discuss. One, one of the things is that there's an ad running in the, in the producer that says that you can go to seminole-oklahoma.net and sign up. Well, that, at this point, I don't believe has been activated. Is that true at this point?
Let me ask our web administrator.
It has been activated this afternoon.
Okay, perfect.
We're good.
All right, good. Well, there were also some other phone numbers that they could call to as well. I think that may have been in the paper as well. So I was going to mention that if that wasn't activated, to make sure they called, because I had some calls on of people wanting to sign up, which is good, so. All right, good, glad to hear it. That was it for me.
Terry?
Well, I'd like to thank captain here at the fire department for fantastic tour of the fire department. I saw equipment that I didn't know we had, and I was shown equipment that our ambulance service has that larger ambulance services don't have. So proud of our fire department and our police department.
Ward four, Chris Anson.
Hi, Dorothy.
DeeDee Patterson.
Well, I'd like to ask Shane. Shane, have we got the drop-off for medications yet?
No, we have not.
Do you anticipate that anytime soon?
Yes, I checked, I actually checked with O G and E and we have signed the formal agreements, we're just waiting for them to receive the box as soon as they receive.
Okay. I'd appreciate if you let me know, because I've got two people that want to know as soon as it happens. Also, before I came, I had a call through our Also, uh, before I came, I had a call through our system, our phone system from the city, and our sirens are going to go off tomorrow on a test at 12 o'clock, I believe, so maybe we should alert everyone of that. Bypass, we got so many cars and so many big trucks going down through those cars, I wish our authorities in, in power would do something about getting us a truck bypass. We need it so bad. That's all I have.
If there being nothing else, and the motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, con cede.